Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board meeting of June 14, 2022 pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20 until July 15, 2022. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491-POUND, or join the meeting via online, join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams throughout the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So I just note this, this is, this meeting is being recorded live, and if there's anybody out there that's also recording it, please let me know. And I see nobody. First order of business is to move the minutes from the June 7, 2022 meeting. And I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And then why don't we do a roll call as well? So I'll start with Mr. Castro. Are you here this evening, Mr. Castro?
Present, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Davis.
Present.
Shell.
Present.
The chair is present, and you'll note that Corey is not here this evening. He has stuff going on personally, so he could not be here, but he's here in spirit as he always is. So minutes moved, please, June 7.
So moved.
Okay, second.
Second.
Edits, comments, suggestions, Mr. Castro.
Mr. Chairman, I have one edit on page two under Public Announcements. In the first sentence, I would like to add at the end after the word assignments, comma, and that it be posted to the town website. And that it be posted to the town website. Thank you.
Got that, Alec? The other edits, revisions, okay. I'll take a vote. Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shell.
Aye.
And the chair abstains. I was not present. Okay. The next order of business are public announcements and agenda item requests. Are there any public announcements and/or agenda items? This gentleman, Mr. Tupper, I believe his name is, from the Cape Cod Commission, please come to the microphone, identify yourself.
Good evening. For the record, Stephen Tupper, Deputy Director with the Cape Cod Commission. So I wanted to take a couple of minutes of your time, I appreciate your time here, to announce that the Cape Cod Commission is hosting our eighth Annual One Cape Summit on August 1 and 2 at the Roquasset Resort, just down the street in Harwich. We're looking forward to doing it in person again after a virtual event last year. Over the course of the summit, attendees will hear from those local to Cape Cod, as well as others from across the country, on efforts to improve housing affordability and accessibility, address marine and freshwater quality, mitigate and adapt to climate change, and promote sustained economic vitality, among other significant regional topics. As we've done in the past, we're partnering with the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association to host, to host their August meeting at the One Cape Summit. The breakfast meeting will take place at 7:30 on August 2 at the Roquasset Resort, run for about an hour and a half until the summit begins at 9:00 AM. So I just wanted to personally extend an invite to members of the Select Board, as well as the Town Manager, Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, to attend the breakfast and the full summit, if you are able as well. I have some paper invites here, but also follow up with an email invitation for those who aren't here in person tonight. Includes information on registration. I'm going to anticipate hearing, we look forward to hearing from you about potentially attending the breakfast, and certainly if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call. I'm in charge of scheduling the weather, so I'm hoping it's going to be a great event this year, so certainly look forward to anyone who's able to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hope we get a day like today. Thank you, Mr. Tupper.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Harrison?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Huntley Harrison, Chairman of the Chatham Airport Commission. I just wanted to let the board know that our workshop for Thursday evening has been postponed. We had a meeting today and found that there are some, some ways that we can approach this issue a little bit better without going into any detail here. I can just say, stay tuned. We will come up with a better plan to, to get the word out to the public and also to the individual property owners. So that's, I just wanted to let you all know, and that was about it.
Okay.
Any questions? I'm more than happy to answer them, but if not, I'll just move on.
All right, Huntley, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. I see we have Mr. Messina online. Frank?
Thank you very much, Mr. Dykens. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you with Mike Shallow on your recent election.
You're muted, Frank. Frank, you're muted.
Well, a lot of years for you, a lot of years, Jeff. Appreciate your commitment to the town. I'm currently Chair of the Historical Commission, and I'd like to make a public announcement or just some information. The Historical Commission, and I'm sure you're aware of it, the Select Board is, in cooperation with the South Chatham Village Association, effectively completed an application for the nomination of the South Chatham Village as a National Registered District. Chatham has two National Registered Districts. The Marconi RCA campus site is a National Registered District, and as well as the Old Village, which was put on the National Register, I think, in 93. So Chatham has a history of historic districts in addition to the HBDC, which is a local historic district. Last week, the Mass Historic Commission Select Board, which is the final arbitrator of an application, voted unanimously to approve the application and pass it on to the National Park Service as a National Registered District. There's a 45-day waiting period, if you will, I guess, before it gets posted on the National Register. This culminates almost a 20-year effort by the South Chatham Village Association and the previous historical commissions, you know, to get the South Chatham Village listed. A lot has changed in the application process. It's not as simple as it was back when we did the Old Village, in the sense that they're not just looking for architecturally significant buildings and structures, but they're looking for the history, the history and the contribution of a particular district to the community. And the South Chatham Village specifically does that because of its maritime history, windmills that pumped water to dry, to make salt and fishing. So it was a significant, and we look forward to, to that designation for a significant part of Chatham. Actually, the district will run from the Harwich border, the Old Bethany Cemetery, all the way to Cockle Cove Road and down Forest and Pleasant Street, which was the center of the South Chatham Village, which officially was designated in 1820. So that was an announcement, or just a little bit of upgrade. Secondly, if I may, I'd like to, to just announce, and hopefully you and other members of the community have seen the banners downtown indicating Historic Chatham and the organizations involved. Historic Chatham is a group or which consists of all of the specific historic venues in the town of Chatham. Everything from the Chatham Windmill, the Atwood, the Lighthouse, Marconi RCA, Calve Nickerson. And we will hold this weekend, June 17 through 19, something we call History Weekend. There are a number of particular efforts which are going to be happening. The museum's going to be open. You can get additional information online at historic-chatham.org. So everything from the windmill, we hope to be open, grinding corn. The Marconi Museum will be open. The Atwood is having a special opening, which will be half price. Can't beat that. As well as walking tours by Tim Ward and the Calvin Nickerson homestead. So anyway, sorry to be so long-winded, but I just wanted to welcome the members of the Select Board and the public to participate in the Historic Chatham History Weekend. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Frank. Mr. Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Shell might be joining me in saying this. On Friday last, our colleague Shereen Davis was elected as President of the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association, which is the group that consists of the Select Board members from across the Cape and the islands and other public officials, and I think it's quite an honor for Chatham, and I, we congratulate you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations, Shereen. That I think might even be a first for Chatham.
I think it might be.
It might be. That's great. And I did want to comment on Frank's announcements as well. It sounds exciting, Frank. Congratulations to you and, and the team, the South Chatham Village Association. You guys worked really hard, many, many years to achieve this designation, so congratulations. I think it's great.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Shereen, Ms. Davis.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the airport event that happened, the open house this weekend. It was a really wonderful event. I heard over 700 people attended. That's quite a, quite a statement about our municipal, a little municipal airport, and I congratulate everybody who, who organized that.
Unfortunately, I was unable to get there, but I heard it was, heard it was a great event. I guess off to Jill Goldsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like for Deputy Chief Anderson to meet me at the podium.
I am very pleased to announce my appointment of Deputy Michael, Jeff, sorry. I didn't mean to mess this up for you. It's so important for you. Sorry. To announce my appointment, Deputy Chief Michael Anderson as Chatham's next Police Chief, effective July 1, 2022. I have a couple of things to read, and then I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Chief Anderson. Such action follows the town charter required 15-day notification of the town manager's provisional appointment to the Select Board. As has been my practice, Select Board members were provided an introductory memo and the opportunity to meet and speak with the department head candidate, Mr. Anderson, during the provisional appointment period. Mr. Anderson has served the community as a permanent member of the Police Department since 1996, after serving as a summer special officer from 1992 to 1993, and has steadily worked his way through all ranks. He has served as a deputy chief since September of 2018, following an internal promotional process where he previously served as lieutenant from 2006 to 2018. In his role as deputy chief, he has been responsible for department administration and special services division, including investigations, court prosecutor, and records division, report review, evidence, and property management, emergency management, and police station technology. Over the last four years, Deputy Chief Anderson has also assisted and participated in various administrative functions, along with the chief, to develop the department budget, participate on town leadership teams, and recommend candidates for hire and promotion. He has also partnered with the chief for planning department activities, policies, procedures, and establishing goals for the department. Further, the chief also serves as the acting police chief when the chief is not available, and in that capacity, he consults with the town manager when necessary, and has authority to make executive decisions on behalf of the department. I provided the Select Board with additional information on Deputy Chief Anderson's educational and professional development background, so I won't get into that. But I also want to note, Mr. Anderson and his wife Kathy, a Chatham native and 22-year employee of Sanders Walsh and Eaton CPA, have two daughters who attend Montemoy Regional Schools. Deputy Chief Anderson is well-known to the community and has been a proven leader and communicator with town employees and our community. He has exceeded my expectations in his performance of deputy police chief over the last four years, and was enthusiastically recommended by Police Chief Mark Paulina to serve as Chatham's next police chief. A formal swearing-in ceremony is planned for 11:00 AM on Thursday, June 30, with more details to follow, and we also plan to schedule community introductions and other activities for the community to have direct access to our new police chief, Anderson. Chief, would you like to say anything?
Thanks for the kind words. Madam Town Manager, honorable members of the Select Board, valuable members of our community, and welcome guests of our community. I am truly honored with this opportunity of being your new police chief, especially now as we celebrate your department's 100th anniversary. Most of you know me, and you know your department. You remember where we came from and where we are now. But for those who are curious of what our future, of what your future of your department will look like, I'd like to read something from our mission statement. The Chatham Police Department is committed to providing excellence in police service to all people of our community, to fairly and effectively prevent crime, uphold the law, and safeguard lives and property. We dedicate ourselves to proactively engage with our citizens by developing community partnerships, and to work with our citizens by using a problem-solving approach to improve the quality of people's lives, and help make the town of Chatham a safe and desirable place to work, live, and visit. That's what your police department is going to look like going forward. Your department looks forward to serving you. I thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Super. Well, any more public announcements out there, online or in here? Okay, how about agenda item requests by the board and/or the public? Any agenda item requests? Looking at my screen, looking here, I don't see any. So we'll go on to our, the rest of our agenda, which is comprised of new business, and then we'll have some, some regular business. The first item of new business is a public hearing on the change of manager on annual all-alcoholic beverages club license, Eastward Ho Country Club. And I'll have our clerk, Mr. Shell, read the public hearing notice. Mr. Shell.
Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 14, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the large meeting room at Town Office Annex 261 George Ryder Road, Chatham, and remotely via Microsoft Teams platform to consider a request for a change of manager to the annual, to the annual all-alcoholic beverages club license for Eastward Ho Country Club, Inc., from John Defoe to Edmund McGuire. All interested parties are encouraged to participate.
And we have Mr. McGuire, I believe, here with us this evening. Do you have any comments, Mr. McGuire? Step up and make sure that...
No, I just came to make sure that if there were any questions, I'd be able to answer them for you.
Super. Okay. Any issues, any comments or questions from the Select Board members?
No.
I have none as well. Okay. Shauna?
Public hearing.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public online? Okay, hearing seeing none. I'll entertain a motion.
I would move the vote to authorize Edmund McGuire to sign the application submitted and to execute on the entity's behalf any necessary papers, and to do all things required to have the application granted, and further to appoint Edmund McGuire as its manager of record and hereby grant him or her with full authority and control of the premises described in the license and authority and control of the conduct of all business therein as the licensee itself could in any way have and exercise it if, if it were a natural person residing in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, that was a heck of a motion. Okay. Take a vote. Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Aye.
Shell, aye, and the chair says aye as well. Congratulations. Thank you all very much. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, our regular business agenda, we'll entertain public comments on the business agenda. We'll include our mobile, a third reading and a vote on our mobile food vending regulations, bond, vote on bond anticipation notes for stormwater, wastewater, and water treatment facilities, and then we'll proceed with committee appointments and reappointments. So any public comment on the business agenda forthcoming? I see none here in the annex, and I see none online, so let's continue right along with the third reading and the discussion of our mobile food vending regulations, and I will turf it to Shauna Neely, our licensing agent, and then we'll open up for discussion by the board. Shauna.
Yes, so after the board's last reading of the regulations, staff did conduct site visits to Eldridge Garage property to see if there was an appropriate location to site truck this, this summer, as we had first suggested that this summer might not be the best time to start this, as the garage lot is not complete and there is some, some project site work going on there. During the visit, we did observe the proximity of the residences to just about, on three sides of the lot, with one commercial in on the other side. So at this time, staff does not recommend, and we've heard some, several of the neighbors that they oppose having a food truck located at that site, so at this point, staff is just, is not recommending that it's an appropriate place for, for mobile food vending at this time.
Okay, so that is a change from, from the last time we discussed the regulations.
The last time the, the regulations were discussed, staff had recommended off, not, not for this season, but the board did seem interested in having it sited there this season, so we went back out and took a look.
Okay.
Can you repeat that question?
After the board's last reading, staff members, myself, Community Development Director Katie Donovan, and police, excuse me, Fire Chief Dave Di Pasquale, visited the site, observed the proximity of the residences, and recommends at this time that it is not appropriate at this point.
Okay. Ms. Davis.
Thanks, Shauna, for the evaluation that you just gave us on Eldridge Garage. Couple of questions. Have, in general, has, have we had inquiries into our mobile vending business?
I've heard from two interested parties. One is considering a, a small, if you will, coffee cart kind of arrangement, and the other is from a local business that does not currently have a food truck.
And anybody showing any interest in Eldridge Garage specifically?
The only specific interest that I've heard from is the, the local restaurant that's interested in obtaining a, a truck, and the merchants association for Mondays on Main. However, they do have an alternate site at 400 Main Street for that event.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm going to accept the analysis of, of town staff on, on the recommendations for Eldridge Garage, and I, I do want to say, though, that, you know, when we started to work on some of these projects, including the Eldridge Garage, Chatham 365, you know, we, we talk about vibrancy and opportunity, and, and we do have to consider balance, but I'm increasingly finding, you know, it difficult with, you know, neighbors are having a conflict, conflicts with people being, you know, able to operate, you know, businesses around town, and I think we need to be sensitive of that, as well as sensitive to the neighbors' needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I want to echo what Shereen Davis just said, and I respect... and I, I respect and accept the evaluation that the staff made. And I've read, I've read the communications we've received from some of the neighbors. As many people know, I was very much in, in, in the lead with others in acquiring that, that parcel. I did not want to see it developed. I didn't want to see it turned into a, a large McMansion, for example. But we recognize that there have been historically homes, residences in the proximity, abutting, abutting the property as well, and new residences across the street. But we also need to recognize that that's sort of a transitional part of Main Street. It's kind of the ending of the commercial part of the, of the street. If you think back a little bit, in addition to the, the gas station and the historical use of the garage property, right next to it, there was an insurance agency and a real estate agency. And there's an inn on the other side that has an active restaurant. And even prior to that, across the street, or diagonally across the street, where we have a number of new residences, there were two inns, and the Campari's Restaurant originally was located. So it's, it's, it's changed. It's, it's probably continued, it will probably continue to change. And we need to be respectful of the concerns and legitimate concerns of neighbors going forward. We also want to be respectful of the business needs of the community. And there are some businesses that, close to there that don't get the attention that businesses further up on Main Street get. So we'll have to just keep that in mind going forward. I don't have a particular brief in either direction as to whether you should have food vendors on, on the Eldridge Garage lot or not. Shereen and I both served on the Eldridge Garage Committee. We heard from a lot of people. The neighbors were very helpful to us in identifying what should go there and what should not go there. That committee met as far back as four, four years ago when food, mobile food vending really wasn't a big issue in this town. So it really wasn't discussed, as I recall, at all. If, if, if at all, it wasn't discussed very much. So all I'm saying is that I think this is a good recommendation. And I will continue, as I suspect my colleagues on the board will continue to look, listen to the neighbors and be respectful of, of their concerns. We'll also, you know, try to be responsive to the larger, you know, I shouldn't say larger, the other needs in the community and try to make sure that we balance things out in a way that is sensitive to everybody's needs and that we don't have obnoxious noises and, and odors in, in the neighborhood. I don't live too far from there myself, so I'm very, very sensitive to what, what it takes to enjoy life here, here in downtown, in downtown Chatham. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nacastro. Mr. Shell.
I, I'll just try to be really brief. I would endorse both Shereen's and Dean's comments. The balancing is important. I do accept the recommendation. I think it's well, well, well thought out of, of staff. I just want to say that I, I hope that this is an experimental program, and I hope that we can maybe take a look at this again when the whole property is, is fully, I don't want to say developed, but in, in the condition in which it's planned to be.
And I, well, thank you, Mr. Shell. I would echo my fellow Select Board members. I agree with the staff recommendation as well. I think we do have to hear very closely to what neighbors are saying and thinking. And, you know, mobile food vending was not a part of the original plan. So let's see how that plan plays out. Let's get it developed, as you guys have noted, and let's, let's revisit it in the future. So I certainly, you have consensus here on that recommendation. I think, I think it's a good one. Any other comments on the regs themselves here by the Select Board? Mr. Shell.
Just a couple of very technical points. One, I note in Section 1 of the policy, you talk about, we talk about in the best interest of the town. And then if we go over to Section 2.14, we talk about the waiver being in the best interests of the community. I, I don't know whether those are supposed to be different concepts or different standards. I might have guessed that it would be the same standard, but I'll leave it to you to sort that out. My other con, uh, comment in Section 4.1 at the end, in terms of how licenses are to be granted, it's, it's the town manager, "by such means as it shall determine appropriate," including by lottery or other reasonable means. I, I think our intent is that it be also equitable. And I think either equitable does a better job or maybe reasonable and equitable gets the point across. And then I have a question on Section 5. The last sentence of Section 5.5 says, "Additional days may be purchased in blocks of 10 for $100." Is that as of, intended to be as of right? Or is there a subsequent determination that has to be made?
No, no other determination other than availability of spaces at the approved locations.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Shell. Anybody else? Mr. Nacastro?
I'm, I'm prepared to offer a motion, and I accept the, the edit that Mike made in Section 4.1 by adding the words "and equitable."
Yep.
Reasonable and equitable. Did you have another edit? I don't know if you did.
No.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My last question is, if we are going to take this up formally, are we taking up Attachment 1 as well?
Yes. Those are the locations, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I, I, and with respect to those, I, I... My questions were, one, with respect to, and this may be just because I'm the new kid on the block here. Oyster Pond is 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in, in the summer, and I just wondered what the thinking was behind not being more of a daily thing. And then with respect to the community center parking lot, Mr. West's letter or submission, as I recall, said that he'd be okay with 5:00 o'clock as the closing for days when the anglers are playing.
We can certainly change the community center lot to 5:00. It was just intent to give some time for turnover. I know that they do take a little bit to, to close down. For the Oyster Pond parking lot, it was generally just, it's one of the few town beaches that does not require a sticker. So it is heavily trafficked, especially by families with younger kids. So we just didn't want to sort of interfere with that activity or limit the number of spaces available for that activity during the day.
But Shauna, if I might, but it wasn't related to worrying about other vendors there?
We do have the ice cream vendor, the, the roaming vendor that is under contract, that does visit during, during beach hours during the day. So that would be another conflict.
But why wouldn't we have, be able to offer lunch and burgers and stuff during? Is that, is that your point, Mr. Shell?
As somebody who remembers going to Oyster Pond and, and having to go home for lunch, that was really the source of the question. Yes.
They're the board's regulations, so...
I would support making it noon time to whenever. If there's space, if there's room. I mean, if we're going to offer it.
I'd be interested in hearing what Katie has to say because that's a small lot, you know? I walk by it a lot.
I have another.
Thank you. If I may. I, I do think it's, it is a tough lot. There, we would assume that a truck and their equipment and everything will take up at least two parking spaces there. So thinking about that, that's the reason why we recommended it, that it be towards the end of the day so that they weren't taking up the, the free spaces that are offered to, to the community. So it's not that we are opposed to it. We were just concerned about taking up, you know, at least two parking spaces on a regular basis.
Jeff.
Please, Ms. Davis.
I just want to remind you, this is a pilot program, and it's not set in stone, so...
Mr. Nacastro.
I was going to offer a motion, but I, I would, I would stick with the original recommendation of, of the staff at 5:00 at Oyster Pond unless there's strong sentiment otherwise here. I don't know where the majority of the...
I would just like to make the point that I think maybe the activity at Oyster Pond is kind of during the day rather than at dusk. So I, I think it makes a lot more sense to have food vending there if we're going to have it there, and to have it during when it's really active to see whether or not it's popular or not.
I agree with you, Jeff. I do.
I mean, you have swimming, you know, swimming lessons, and you got families. And I think that it makes some sense to have lunch offered there. That's all. Makes sense to me.
Mr. Chair, so the roaming food vendors respond to a request for proposal, and they actually pay the town in order to have the service. And I think that we're in the second year, so we are not going out to bid until the end of the season. So it would interfere with what they had originally been to bid on to provide the services for the roaming services. And I think, but that should be done by 5:00. There's no after-hour services.
So is that an exclusive arrangement?
Yes, because they, they were awarded it through the, through a procurement process.
Okay. Okay. But I would be more than willing, next year, to, I mean, it's, it's, it should be lunch for the, you know, burgers and dogs for the kids.
In recognition of that, the, we can work then to refine the RFP for the roaming service to perhaps include fixed at that location, if that's the desire, or we can expand the RFP in some way.
Okay. Great. Good. Sounds good.
As for next year?
Next year, yep.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Shell. Mr. Nacastro.
Just before I offer the motion, I just wanted to make one other comment on Eldridge. In addition to hearing from the neighbors, we also heard from Mr., from Aladdin. I can't remember his last name. I want to say Trzyski. Okay.
Vele.
I got it right. And, and who operates the Vale service. And, and he expressed some concern about having a vendor there. So I think that's very important. And, and, you know, we'll, we'll see what things look like in the future once that, that whole area, as, as has been mentioned, is, is built up and, and, and looks pretty. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I want to recommend, I want to move that the board approve the, the food, the mobile food vendor regulations, as has been proposed and as we have amended them this evening in our discussion.
In a second.
Second.
Okay. In a vote. We'll start with Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Well, it's unanimous. Thank you. Thank, thank you for your work, your time, and thoughtfulness. Okay. Some business done. Here we go. Bond anticipate, anticipation notes. I believe that Sharon Drown is online, is going to present this. Hi, Sharon. Welcome.
Hi. Hi. Good evening, Honorable Select Board. Filling in for Alex Halewicz evening on this agenda item pertaining to the award of a bond anticipation note. On Wednesday, June 8th, 2022, we received bids for a bond anticipation note totaling $2,850,000. The band will cover the expenses to date, which are mainly for design and engineering costs as well as estimated costs through the end of the calendar year. We obtained four bids with net interest rates ranging from 2.013% to 2.3607%. The low bidder was Fidelity Capital Markets with a net interest rate of 2.013%. We received a premium of $13,879.50 that will cover issuance costs related to the band. Interest cost for the band is $71,250. The budget for short-term interest approved for FY 2023 is $250,000. The town will either permanently finance the band or roll it over next year. We continue to consult with our financial advisors to take advantage of favorable interest rates when looking to permanently finance projects. These projects are also eligible for financing through the Mass Clean Water Trust, state revolving fund, for low-interest rates. That's 2% for water projects and 0% for wastewater. Design and engineering costs do not qualify for Clean Water Trust loans. It is respectfully recommended that the board vote to approve the attached vote of the Select Board, in which Michael Shell, clerk of the board, will need to sign the vote. There are additional signature pages for the board to sign tonight as well. There's the bond anticipation note, the signature, not literature, litigation, and official statement certificate, tax certificate, and significant events disclosure certificate. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Questions for Sharon or comments? Mr. Nacastro.
Well, I have a question. I do have a comment. This is obviously the interim borrowing for these projects. The question is, I didn't see this recited anywhere. This long vote that the clerk is going to have to sign, does it have to be read tonight? Because I think we have actually read it in full in previous meetings. Have we not?
Right. You do not, it is not necessary to read the vote.
Okay. My comment, and I'm, I'm fully supporter of this. My comment is, and these are typically very complicated sets of documents, the ones that Alex sent us. This is, this particular set seemed more complicated than I can remember. And I was just wondering if things tightened up since, in the last couple of years. I just, there are, there've always been multiple documents. This is just, seems even more involved than, than I remember.
I'm unaware of any changes.
Okay, but they've been...
Sorry, I don't have a better answer.
That's all right. They've been approved by our bond council. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Shell.
Go ahead.
I'm sure you don't want to do this one. I move to approve the attached vote of the Select Board.
In a second.
No, no, I, I...
We can talk.
Yeah. You can second that.
Let's second it.
I'm not going to second it.
Oh, okay.
I, I, with all due respect, Dean, I have to sign this, that we approve these resolutions. I'm sorry to impose it, but I, I think I should read these. And I think we should do them as separate resolutions.
That's fine.
And I'm, I apologize for contradicting the staff, but I would just feel more comfortable if we actually approved each resolution.
I, I think, oh, Mr. Chairman, I think, I agree with that. I, we actually, I think, have read them entirely in the past. It took a while, but I think we've done that. That's why I asked the question.
We, we... Mr. Shell, read away.
Okay. So this will be six separate resolution, motions. The first motion is to approve the sale of $2,850,002.50 general obligation bond anticipation notes, the notes of the town dated June 23, 2022, and payable June 23, 2023 to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services, LLC, at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $13,879.50.
All in favor, say aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Shell.
Aye.
Chair says aye.
I, I move that in connection with the marketing sale of the notes, preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated June 1, 2022, and a final official statement dated June 8, 2022, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted.
In a vote. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Shell.
Aye.
Chair says aye.
I further move that the town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes
shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time.
And a vote. Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Chair says aye.
I further move that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws.
And a vote. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Shell.
Aye.
Chair says aye.
I further move that any certificates or documents relating to the notes collectively the documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures.
Okay. Vote. Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Shell.
Aye.
Chair says aye.
And I further move that each member of the select board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Took me a while, huh?
Roll call, please.
Roll call?
You have to roll call.
You have to roll call.
I was a hybrid.
Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Are we going to further certify, or are we done?
No, I just have to sign that.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Good job, Sharon. Good job, select board. Next item of business is, we have committed some committee reappointments this evening. Two incumbent terms expiring June 30, 2022. We have two reappointees, if you will, and I'll entertain motions to reappoint.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Davis.
If it's okay, I would move to appoint both Dr. Richard Edwards and John Beckley to the Board of Health until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Move and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have to do a roll call on this? Okay. Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
The chair says aye. We have one incumbent term expiring June 30, 2022. The member candidate for reappointment is Warren Shane. A motion, please.
I move to appoint Warren Shane to the planning board until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Okay, roll call. Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. We have an open space incumbent term expiring June 30, 2022, and that candidate for reappointment is George Cooper. A motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint George Cooper to the Open Space Committee until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you very much. Summer Residence Advisory Committee, we have two incumbent terms expiring June 30, 2022. The member candidates for reappointment to the Summer Residence Advisory Committee are Kathryn Malfe and Roger Allen Donald. A motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint both Kathryn Malfe and Roger Allen Donald to the Summer Residence Advisory Committee until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Okay, all in favor. Okay, Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
The chair says aye. Energy and Climate Action Committee, we have one incumbent term expiring June 30, 2022, and that member candidate for reappointment is Sarah Griscum. A motion. Mr. Shell.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Sarah Griscum to the Energy and Climate Action Committee until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
And a second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
And the chair also says aye. Community Housing Partnership, we have one incumbent term expiring June 30, 2022, and that member candidate for reappointment is Tracy Cannon. I'll move that.
Second.
And I'll take a roll. Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
And the chair.
June 30, 2025.
And the chair says aye as well. And Community Preservation Committee, one incumbent term for the Conservation Commission representative, expiring June 30, 2022. The Conservation Commission recommends Karen Latin as its representative to the Community Preservation Committee. And a motion, please. Mr. Shell.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Karen Latin to the Community Preservation Committee as the Conservation Commission representative until June 30, 2025, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, and a roll. Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Mr. De Castro.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Alec. Is there a third opening on the Summer Residence Advisor Committee? Because I had heard from one of the members whose term I think is coming up. Has that person contacted you? I suggested that she do.
Yes, I believe someone is elected not to be reconsidered for reappointment, so there will be an opening vacancy.
Not to be reconsidered?
Well, we have had a candidate who said that they're not looking for reappointment, so.
Okay, because the one I spoke to, I thought, was.
There might be. So, yes, the one you're talking about, yes. I'm going to have them be before the board next week.
Okay.
So, yes.
Thank you.
I understand. No problem.
Thank you, Alec. Thank you, Mr. De Castro. That concludes our business agenda this evening, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shall move.
A second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Oh, Mr. De Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Thank you. Good night, Chatham. Take care. Good night.[1752.01]